The TC Freeze, located in Monazuma, Indiana. We offer over thirty-two soft-serve flavors of creamy delicious ice cream. Ham-breaded pork tenderloin. Famous homemade pony sauce. And don't forget our roasted chicken. Open Tuesday through Sunday, ten thirty to nine thirty. To place an order, call seven six five two four five two eight eight seven. We appreciate your business.
Okay, I have six thirty, we'll call the Town of Marshall Council meeting to order. Let's do things first. Does it create your problem? Paying her direct revenue, you'll see.
No, it's just we're paying both of them, they each paid.
Thank you.
Yeah, Kenny just said that since he's having her do it most of the time, just start paying her. Yeah, he said, no, he's, all he's doing is just signing this check over to her. So he said, you might as well just be paying her. No, I still, yeah, still paying him, so.
Well, originally, I, we'd ask about that.
Oh.
Here too, go on, I said, if she's doing it to help you, you can just collect and then give it to her. But if it doesn't mess up your books.
Not that, I'm keeping them all separate, yeah. So basically, we probably won't see anything out of Kenny, it's just Jackie.
But not for a good while.
Yeah, yeah, he goes with her, but he's training her. So since Dad can't go a lot of times.
How's Brady?
Good, how are you?
Good, good, yeah.
So far, so good.
Good. Ready for baseball season?
Oh geez, I don't know.
It's getting started.
We just finished basketball. Yeah. They coached two teams in basketball, now I got two lined up for baseball and softball and... I don't know, we'll see.
You got a ways to go, come on.
Yeah, but coaching two teams is a lot, like just going to ballgames is a lot by itself. But if you're actually doing the practices and stuff.
If they find out you coach, they'll start recruiting you.
Oh, yeah.
They need to break that.
I don't know about that. Yeah, we haven't jumped into that pool yet.
Uh, I'm gonna jump over old business and go into new business. We have some guests here this evening. Dylan Lammermuth from West Ray Engineering. Dr. Gooden's not here tonight, right? Rick, and I can't remember. Okay. From Rural Development. And Cindy Todd from Partnership Park County. You've seen her a number of times here. What, what we're ready for now is to open some discussion and especially have a chance for the board to hear the same message that our group that's been meeting has heard. And we've been on this quest for quite a long time, since really the nineteen eighties, when we first started looking at some kind of wastewater treatment in this part of the county. But this particular opportunity came about and we have had discussions with DNR. We've had discussions with Rockville, Bloomingdale. And of course, Wesler Engineering has led the whole group. Cindy is just fabulous in getting the players all together and making sure that everybody gets on the same page. So what I want to do is turn it over to Dylan right now and he'll bring you up to speed on what we know. There's a lot that's not known, a lot that's still in discussion. But I thought it was time that we definitely had a chance to talk and discuss.
So, boy, where to start? Darlie, you were on the committee last go around, right? That kinda died. And then the town, from there, had your ARP money. And we said, well, we're gonna keep this going. So the town had put together, put together PDR, just for you guys, if you're a member.
Yep.
Submitted that to the state, to SRF. SRF said, well, we really think this looks probably like a better fit for Rural Development funding initially. So that's how Dr. Gooden, who isn't here tonight, got involved with us. And then as he became involved, I think one of the key things he was focused on was sustainability. And concerns about having a regional wastewater plant and that being sustainable long-term. So that was the push to do a couple other things, right? Bring in Bloomingdale, to increase the number of users in the system. And also look at using the Rockville wastewater plant to, as our, as a treatment. So, so really what we are kinda ready to do now is, with Cindy's help, she's really kinda got the county council back, involved and engaged in things. So we are wanting to start with the towns. So we were in Rockville and Bloomingdale last night with the same worksheet, just saying, here's where we are, here's what we know, and here's what we see coming up over the next few months. But wanted to make sure that they had an opportunity to talk about concerns or questions that they have. And as we move forward, because we expect to start doing some community outreach, public meetings and those types of things, as we lead up to having conversations with the county council in the summer. So that's the goal today, is to really just make sure that you guys are the first to hear it, that also the three towns are hearing the same thing. So as far as need, and this is kinda structured, maybe for some that don't know, right? So in Rockville, they may not know what the need is for sewer in Marshall. But I think it's well-known here. We currently have applications in, I mentioned the one that was under Marshall's name, that's Dylan with SRF. But what we've done for the adding Bloomingdale and the park in is put them into both Rural Development and SRF under, currently under Town of Rockville. That was just done for convenience, because there isn't an entity yet
Right.
at the county level to make applications under. And that's where, that's the process that we're looking to start down that path, is looking at a regional sewer district formation to have that as a body that we can apply to. So obviously with the need on the septic, the working group, as Kevin mentioned, I mean, we've been under just this part of, this version of this story going on a year now, back since beginning of twenty twenty-three. We got the PDR back in in April. There's a little bit of time off there during the summer. But here lately, we've been really trying to push and ramp things back up again. So the working group with Kevin, with Jared from Bloomingdale, with Park from Rockville, along with Rural Development, Cindy, we've been meeting every two weeks. And really trying to figure out, make sure we got everything submitted for Rural Development, what they need, deserves quite a bit of documentation, that is needed for their program. And just trying to inch it forward as we go along. DNR has continued to be very involved in those meetings, I think they pretty well been with everyone, either between Chris or somebody from the state too. So it's been good to see them engaged and participating in those processes.
That's very good.
So, I already mentioned it before, but I'm down here just talking about the proposed project. So Town of Marshall, Town of Bloomingdale, the school, and the park. So the way it's envisioned now, and I've got the report with me, that we're stationed at the park upon two Marshall. That'll pick up both the school and the park. It's sized for additional capacity along forty-seven there. If any of those other properties you wanna connect in here now or in the future, then there'll be a reflection system here in Marshall, and then they build back road through. We look to going down forty-one, from a cost standpoint, we're gonna make a more sincere this way. Now Bloomingdale, they'll just go south out of town, out towards the jail, and come into town from that direction for their connections. So it'll really be through separate conveyances down that route. So from a customer connection standpoint, we haven't formalized what the boundaries of the district are. We envision them to pretty well be town limits. We've set the PDR up so that properties have access to connect to gravity sewers. And so as part of that, the way that the code is written for regional sewer districts is the district has the opportunity to require that the properties connect unless they can get away from it. So waivers is working with the county health department to demonstrate that you have a functional septic system, that it doesn't have any issues, that it's been inspected, and all those types of things. But if that waiver isn't able to be obtained, the district has the ability to require that connection. Now as far as the transmission mains, the force mains, so the pipe that would go from town to Rockville, that's really just set up to get it from A to B, it's not really intended for connections. So the property owners that are along that route, it just doesn't make sense. And we wouldn't expect to require them to.
So when you start collecting, when you come in from the school to town, so that would, the collection would start at the end of town?
Yes.
For those?
Yeah.
And then you'll go?
Yeah.
Because I figured it was, you know, a high-pressure pipe, so I didn't, that was possible, or how you were to get it?
So there'll be, there'll be two pump stations in town itself.
Okay.
The way the grid falls.
Right, okay, so you're back to that.
Kind of way they're in the tracks. Yeah. And so it'll drop in there on the north end, and it'll pump through, uphill through, past Matthews there, and then go down.
Seth, okay.
So I'm gonna go to the next page. So as we, you know, from here until the summer, we wanted to come to the towns and make sure you heard it first, in the same version from each. We do expect here in March and then into April, starting with the public outreach, we'll be using the website from Cindy to post information. I've got brochures here that we've got from RCAP, the Rural Community Assistance Program. It's educational for property owners that may not have a lateral, or know what a sewer is, or it talks about comparisons of septic versus sewer. So just to start to explain what this will be for a homeowner. And really try to get it so that it's available for people that have questions or wanna learn more with that information that's out there. We expect potentially in May that we do a public meeting. And it'll probably be at the fairgrounds, or I don't know where exactly, but it'll be an opportunity to explain this to anyone who wants to come, to answer with the questions and concerns that they have. But that is also, will be a documented public hearing, too. We've done those before for the water tower project and things, as a funding agency requirement for those as well. The notice period for those, thirty days before that meeting takes place, we have to start with the paper. So it'll come out in the Sentinel, potentially in April. And then two weeks before that meeting, every property owner that is in the boundary will get a letter, too. So before any of those things happen, we wanna start giving information out there so people are aware. As the district is formed, decisions will have to be made, you know, if they don't have a board. So who's gonna be on the board, how the appointments are gonna be made, how the community and the government will be representing, will be all part of that. This is just kind of a sketchout of what we have so far. This isn't final, but really it's from each of the towns. The code does say that if the district sends their wastewater flow to a municipality that has a wastewater treatment facility, they need to sit on that board to be part of those discussions. So that is, it's required that Rockville will be part of that, obviously with the county, and then I thought it'd be good for the townships to be able to have appointments, too. So from a funding standpoint, it's pretty well every rock that we can look under. And so that's why we've expanded out beyond SRF, which is what we use for the water tower, because it's a little bit bigger, to look at Rural Development. Cindy has applied to what they call Ready Grant, some of you might be familiar with those. And then really just trying to maximize those pieces. Steve Brock is working on a rate study right now. So I hope here in the next week or two that we have some sketchouts of what rates will look like. But that's one of the big things that we don't know now. So is what that rate structure will look like. For the customers, I know we've talked about generalities, all those types of things in the past, and hope to get better clarity on that before you're asked to really make any decisions. So that's not tonight, really, it's just, is there questions, is there support? Because we're getting ready to move to that next step. Likely in May, if we're going to the county in June, probably in May, we would be coming back, asking the town to do their own resolution to support six districts. So really to formalize it, or make that decision to formalize it here in a couple of months. And then we'll have that ready as we then go on to the county. So, so those are the next steps, it's public engagement, public hearing. This is, this is good, everything goes the way it should. It may not, it may not be May, it may be June, so we'll just have to, but we're pushing to get it moved forward. So so for tonight, I just wanna request your acknowledgement of where we're at, and hopefully have your support. And then, if there are questions or concerns, get those aired. Letters of support, we've talked about those before, also talked about them with the other communities, too. I think what we'd like to ask is that any members of the town write a letter to the town board, and we will collect all those and put those together for the agencies. So for that is what I wanted to go through as far as this. I don't know, Cindy or Rick, if you'd like to add anything, but we're all here for questions and discussion as part of this, too.
I just wanted to add, I mean, regardless of, I mean, she was kind of our person on the previous attempt and some of the challenges that we encountered with the county council. So the design of this project really addressed the things that created, you know, some uncomfortableness with that group. So they've been very happy with how this is designed. And as far as sending the wastewater to Rockville for processing, rather than building a new treatment facility and discharging it to a dry creek, which were a couple of big things. So, so they, they are aware of changes, and I think that's what has.
Well, that's good, if they're on agreeance, because last time, it was kinda hard to get them to realize. And plus, knowing the DNR, because I think that was the big hiccup. The DNR was not giving any feedback when it came time to try, for them to try to figure out rates and stuff.
Yeah.
That was a problem. So if they keep cooperating, that'll be good.
And they have been at the table with us many, many times, DNR. So they're not necessarily part of the district, they're a customer of the district.
Right.
So that, that's a different.
They'll be a large customer, though.
They will be a very large customer, yes.
So having said that, Dylan, and this, you went to Rockville and Bloomingdale this week already, you say?
Unless you heard something.
I asked you.
There's the video evidence.
So before, I was always, kinda like we rubbed each other wrong, and Bloomingdale, Marshall, everything else. What's your perspective on the two meetings, Rockville and Bloomingdale? Does it look favorable, you believe, or are we just chasing a pipe dream here?
Yeah, so the, and Dr. Gooden didn't hear, but I think the way he described it, one is that you won't get a better funding package than what they're putting together. I believe they're working very hard at the state level to put something together. So that was one thing that came out. When they're in Rockville, Park reiterated that this cost for this wouldn't be borne by the residents of Rockville, right? So from their perspective, they don't wanna pay for capital improvements
Right.
outside of their, their district. There are some upgrades that need to be made to that system to accommodate this, that is, that is part of that.
But yeah, including that fifty million dollar figure, then, that's no cost to the residents of Rockville.
That's correct.
Okay.
And, you know, they'll generate a good bit of revenue from a wholesale customer, you know, at basically eight hundred homes equivalent, between the two towns and the school and the park, is equivalent to eight hundred, eight hundred home connections. So there is some upside for there. But that was one thing that Park wanted to, I think, clarify for that board, is that there is one way to buy this.
So what's gonna happen, though? Because I could see, like you said, the Rockville, back to the Turkey Run kinda district, kinda that thing, still kinda some people with rate hikes and stuff. Is there gonna be anything so that way, like the certain towns and stuff, wouldn't end up and be totally like, I'll keep my customers in Rockville at this low rate.
Sure.
But I'm gonna pass on any other upgrades after this is done, or anything needs? Because, I mean, eventually you start bringing this in, you're gonna have to get more help, hire more people, that costs your rates. So is that gonna reflect back on, what's gonna protect us so that we don't get that overburden of all that?
So you'll have a contract with Rockville, about purchase agreement really. And that's why we need to go into this, when you get to that point, is to talk openly about scenarios that you might be concerned about with respect to how rate structures that they might pass might, you know, impact you as a, not being within their town, that's a very significant.
Well, if a wastewater district doesn't get developed totally, because how can a town entity be able to furnish up, pay, do business with, not in their area now, it's out of town?
So if, how would Rockville be able to?
As be customers for them.
Yeah, so as, as Marshall the customer, or the individual residents?
As Marshall the customer, the town of Marshall, the homes here in Marshall.
It would be, it would be a similar situation. We had talked about that as an option, as far as, well, maybe it's better that Marshall is a utility and they are a customer in Bloomingdale. I think that some of the sentiment was, between all the things that takes around each utility, billing, maintenance, you know, the staffing, and how dispersed it is, it really makes a lot of sense to look at consolidating resources, to try to do those costs as low as possible. But that option was discussed early on, and I think the sentiment across the board is, the working group was, this is probably the thing that makes the best sense for everybody to just to regionalize it and consolidate. Did I answer your question?
So it is, so they can end up, and we can consolidate, they can end up and sell outside? Because I guess that'd be probably with having the district.
They already sell outside your district on a couple of utilities.
Oh, do they?
Yeah.
Okay.
So then we'd also have to put in the contract, I mean, they could come back in three or four years and say, we're gonna give you a ten percent rate increase, and we'd have no control over that. So you're gonna have to make sure you put in the original contract, whatever the rates we're looking at, that there's gonna be a steady increase and not just boom down the road, they decided, right?
I think that would probably be more rate-study based than just arbitrarily, we're raising your rates. Like it'd be maintenance-related, most likely. You're probably not looking at those costs until down the road, because you're gonna have a whole new system. Whereas like Rockville constantly has upkeep and things they have to do. Your system's brand new, so I don't know what the wear and tear life on this kinda system is, but I imagine it's years, if not decades, would be my guess.
Because that's been a few of the concerns that I've had, that yeah, it's gonna start out and be cheap, and then within a couple, three years, we're gonna be at outlandishly high price, and we can't afford it.
Usually rates are raised based on depreciation of the asset, though. So like if your sewer system's failing, you have to raise rates to improve upon it. So my thought would be, it'd be a contractual language, and it'd be rate-study based raises. So they justify why it's going up, more so than just arbitrarily, we're raising this rate because we want to. So at least that's my view of what you ought to look for in the contract anyways.
Their sewer rates are about, the water rates are high right now.
They have a very old system they're repairing.
So, yeah.
So if they have an old system, we're chiming in and we're saying, well, ours is new, but ours is only new to, against to them.
Right, but yours has only come in at certain parts of their system, though. It's not coming out.
They will be building, building our part of our system there.
Right, and they've done a lot of work on their system.
The wastewater part of it's really pretty good, though.
Right, the actual place where you're going to is good, and the lines, you're gonna, I think part of this fifty million is the lines you're coming into, to make sure it's in good. Because you're not, from what I understood, you're coming down Marshall Road, and you're coming down somewhere from forty-one, coming into town. So you're gonna come into those lift stations and then go down those mains to get to the treatment station. So you're not running down all these side ones. But they've actively been working on a lot of the ones that they've had studies on that need improvement and things. So, but I guess, at least my view of it is, your system's gonna be brand new, and the parts it's coming into are gonna be beefed up to hold your system. So I guess if you're looking at rate increases based on the need for improvement, it's probably a long time down the road, which, like I said, I'm not a sewer expert, so I don't know what that timeframe is, but.
But like you said, there'd be a rate study in the contract to kinda help justify.
Like, that's just my suggestion to you, based on that. I mean, I, I defer to, you know, the engineers and people that know more about how the system works as to that. That's just my thought process.
I think Rockville faces somewhat of the same situation we are, in that our rainwater goes down a tile along with the sewage.
I, I have to look in the poll or something.
And what's happening is, Rockville is treating rainwater the same way they're treating sewage, and that's costing them pretty dearly, and that's what they're trying to repair, is what I got.
Yeah.
Also, if I remember right, Dr. Gooden, maybe the first night that we met, talked about, and when that question was asked about the equity billing, and he said, it comes down to somebody writing a very good contract.
Right.
And that contract will stand, and it can be done, because, I mean, he's seen that. So that's, that was encouragement, that it can protect us.
Yeah, I mean, most of that's contractual, and I am not to be the one that writes that contract. You need somebody that specializes in that sort of thing.
So sustainability, right? To me, this is under, how do they get sustainable for your customers, your residents, right? In terms of cost. And that's been the plug for Rural Development from day one, is regional, I mean, that, oftentimes they're packaged plans. I don't know if you remember having those sessions. About life cycles of twenty years, and we're taking out a forty-year loan on a twenty-year asset. And then, you know, so that leads you down a path of, and maybe how are we gonna sustain that, replace that in twenty years, type of thing, too. So that's, from their perspective, why this might be the better way to go, and it makes sense.
It makes sense, because without it, our town's just gonna keep going down. I mean, that's, I mean, we can't get any more houses, and, I mean, we're kinda stuck.
Industry expansion, too. I mean, you have an industry in town, and so's Bloomingdale, and.
Yours is kinda landlocked already, though.
Yeah, but, I mean, if you have a sewer, other industries may come, you know, surrounding land and things like that. I mean, growth of business.
Yeah.
I don't know, just thoughts.
No, it's been my thought all along with it, I mean, it's an opportunity to try to grow, so.
We have so many single, older, living on social security, that have trouble meeting a water bill right now that's fifty dollars. That, I mean, I know they're not gonna be around here, and our houses seem to sell to some younger people, but we're probably over half that consists of those type of people, that's kinda living paycheck to paycheck. And so that's why I was like, you just kinda hate to throw out another fifty to a hundred dollars and say, hey, when they're having a hard time with fifty dollars sometimes, you know, but. you know, but I understand that they do have other things that they do do and have, but you think of those single widows that are in town and so that's why I just was wondering about the rates. So I see those water bills, deal with them, so.
So what do you do to get people to hook onto their sewer?
So we're going to figure out where the septic tank is. Hopefully we've got a reference of that. And actually, I think from my perspective, we have the design. This was designed in ninety-two, eighty-seven in that area where all that was anticipated, all that was designed. It just didn't get over the approval and the funding piece too. So I doubt a lot of it's changed since then, but yeah, we've got to disconnect the septic tanks, knock the bottoms in, fill in the sand and then re divert it with the lateral over to, over to the sewer.
Well, like, you know, a lot of these people have currently a workable septic. What's going to, want them to hook onto the sewer, knowing that it's going to basically what, triple their cost? I mean, I'm from Rockville, whatever your water is, you multiply by two and a half and that's what you're going to pay for your sewer. Well, what do you, what do you do to convince these people to hook on? I mean, that's a state law or something, I'm not, I'm not aware that it is.
So, so if they can demonstrate and do it through the waiver process, they've got a functioning system because it allows that to go and you can't force them to do a thing with that.
Most of them will not meet that criteria, would be my guess. Most of them are probably not up to par or non-functioning systems or they're not functioning properly, would be my assumption.
Most of the older ones.
So you told me, Dylan, if I've got a good flexion still, my septic works good, I can waiver through this right here at thirteen dash twenty-six and not have to hook up to this here?
It's the way that, it's the way that it reads and you have to go out there and see what it says, what it talks about and you have to have the, the system has to be inspected and it has to be signed off, not by you, but by, I don't know if it's the county or a third party inspector.
That's what I was wondering, who's going to do the inspection?
And they may find the least little thing to mark it wrong.
My question, I mean, as a waiver, I can't imagine giving out a lot of waivers on, talking spending millions of dollars, but sewer system and we need the people hooked to it, is what I'm trying to say.
Well, I think there'd be an independent person that's doing that. It's not going to.
It wouldn't be us.
It's not somebody from the town going to do that.
Back to this point, looked like there's a way around it though, they didn't want to hook up if they passed all the.
Sure.
Well, like I said, we've got the one up in our addition that just put one in within, what, five years ago, six years ago?
If they don't.
So that should be a fairly new and pass inspection, whereas you and me, I mean, mine's been there since the house has been built. I've not had any trouble with it, but there may be something going on I don't know about and the same with you that would pass.
I'd say that's fairly common. Most people do not know at what point in time was the leach field disconnected or one was never put in and they just went right to the tile. And we see that every time Ronnie Black opens up some of our tiles.
That's what I was thinking, back then, a lot of tiles, they've just tied in that overflow.
I've heard, I've heard Ronnie Black and his dad tell the people that work for him, don't you ever go into a tile in Marshall without gloves on. That's, that's how polluted the tiles are and we know that, but we're just looking for ways to rectify the problem. Can we do that? And what are the consequences of not doing it?
And those are, you know, those are your decisions to make, whether to move this forward. What we don't have now is what the actual structure is going to look like, we hope to have that soon. And then you'll have a lot more information, you know, but to me, the two big questions, I think, is this one, right? Who has to connect and how much is it going to cost? So we don't, we don't know all that yet, but even given that unknown, we hope that we have the support of the town that at least can carry it forward and hopefully we find the answers to those questions that are satisfactory.
No, I think this is something that we, like I said, for us to keep the town of Marshall available is something we're going to have to, we need. Besides that, our streams and stuff, we know what's.
Dale, you asked about the other meetings. So Bloomingdale, you know, Jerry really led the discussion with the board. There wasn't a lot of public address, just Monty and John Jeffers. They didn't really have a lot of questions. They just weren't taking in information. I think Jerry kind of explained it after then and kind of guided a lot of that discussion just so you know how, yeah, we've gone. I felt coming out of that that they were just absorbing information, you know, and wanted to learn and know more as we go through this. I mean, I'll take it out if you ask them.
I mean, I'm not against it whatsoever, I'm one hundred percent for it, period. And I understand we're getting a little whitewash.
I just don't want to price everything out of, we need it, I agree, but if you can price yourself out of.
They go to Rockville, they'll be in the same business. They go to Monzuma, it's the same thing.
But, you know, I just found out Monzuma is the cheapest place to live.
It ought to be.
No.
Oh, no, no, no.
I'm not agreeing with that.
I have, no, I mean, I'm not trying to disrespect Monzuma.
No, I said I live there.
Oh, okay.
I disagree with you.
Oh, no, my friends have a three bedroom house and a three car garage over there and their gas, electric, sewer and water is two hundred and fifty dollars the highest a month.
That's very evil then.
And, because I asked her the other night, somehow we kept talking about it. I said, can I be nosy and ask what your rates are? I about flipped.
Yeah, we've had, I mean, bills close to four hundred dollars.
She's never had it. She said, if I have anything, she said, I always pay over. So she said, I will pay sometimes two hundred and fifty dollars and she said, I carry a credit every month. And she said, I very seldom will ever pay more. She said, I think maybe once since I've been there and they've been there for, they're our age.
Yeah, I mean, you say that's probably the exception.
They've raised a family there and I'm like, oh my gosh, how do you do that? And she said, that's why we live where we live.
I think there's, there's a lot of questions that haven't been asked and definitely haven't been answered and we're waiting on that. I think it was, I watched the, the video from Rockville and I heard what Dr. Gooden said, you will never have any point in time that a sewer system coming to the table will ever be any cheaper than right now. He's going, he's going to ensure, he's going to ensure that. And he said that pretty much the first night that we met and sat down as a group. And I, I really respect somebody coming out and saying that. I don't think it's just a political move because sooner or later you've got to put up and I think, Rick, at the table, we see that, we see the dollars that are looking like they're, they're going to flow into the project.
Does the state currently have initiative about getting wastewater and stuff cleaned up?
A lot of initiatives, I think that interacts with that.
So on our side from the, from the federal level, when we do a project like this, we bring all the state and federal agencies to the table. The idea of a capital staff to favor the project, of course, it's not going to be a hundred percent, but we want to be able to pay for as much of it through the different agencies and their various initiatives, ours included, that we can, to take care of that as much of the cost as possible. So we'll bring, you know, Ogra and DNR and State Revolving Fund and all the other agencies to the table as well. And they'll all contribute what they're able to contribute based on their budget, their guidelines, regulations.
So I think that's probably what's making it somewhat look more positive as a reasoning right now is the time to do it. Okay.
So appreciate your time. If there's something else, we'll, we'll leave it there on the agenda. I'm going to stick around in case there's anything else you want to talk around later, but.
Yeah, thank you guys both. I love it.
I didn't intend to insult you really.
I'm sorry.
So I didn't intend to insult you really.
We, we'll continue to have these team meetings every two weeks.
I know you slipped in, so I thought maybe that was you.
And it keeps things moving, it keeps things going. So, you know, I'll share as things, things happen, but we're really waiting for the establishment of a district.
I'm hoping something to get going first.
Yeah, but it all is, is coming together like, you know, early summer is going to be a time where we know a lot more with that. And the big question is, what's it going to cost?
Well.
That's, that's what everybody's going to ask, first one. They're not going to disagree, we need it, they're going to say, what's it going to cost? And we cannot answer that question.
Well, and getting the county council to actually approve for you to have a district is going to be a big one. That's the sign off.
Jim Mies has sat in on many of those meetings from the commissioner's perspective, so I think that's good. I mean, there's a lot of ears and there's a lot of voices out there that's being heard.
The bounce back I was hearing, like was already brought up, was that they weren't excited about the idea of a plant being put in up here. But if it's going to Rockville, my guess is that probably will lead whoever said that earlier.
Well, I think that was what it was, because it was more like the farm ground being taken away.
Correct, that seemed to be where the chat was with the council.
Yes, it was.
That's a little bit of relish right there.
But if you're going to end up being putting a pump station up in this area, then that's, where's that going to go?
Yeah, but if you look at the expansion to Scott Pitts and the pump station.
It looks like it's not very big, so.
Correct, and so that might be more palatable to property owners and the council. And there was originally some pushback on that too, but they found a willing property owner and they put it on the willing property.
They did that one right there, Pitt Scott's building there, got nice fins, right?
Yeah.
Looks nice.
Oh, you can make them look decent, you know? They also, you know, property owners can receive compensation for letting the place be put there too. So, I mean, even if they don't want it, sometimes that's the set off is to be compensated to do it. But it does allow for a lot of expansion if possible as far as development, houses, you know, businesses. I mean, it's going to go right through my front yard, so as far as the force line, so.
You're going to be able to hook on?
No, I mean, you can't make me. I just put in a brand new sewer, very, very, so like two, three years ago. That's why they have those parts in that statute, those for people like that where you literally just build a house and you literally just pay twenty grand for it.
Wire.
Yeah.
At what point though, do they end it up and when, I guess when their system starts failing, that you can end up and force them to go on the sewer?
We'll have to ask him because he sent that to me the other day.
This is just.
You don't have to do that yet. That's what they're talking about, where they were talking about a resolution in support of the petition. I just went ahead and drafted that because Rockville had mentioned it to me and so I just did yours when I did Rockville's.
Gotcha.
So, I mean, that, they'll tell you when they need that. It sounds like maybe in June probably, but, so yeah, that's already done, so you don't, you're not waiting on me if the time comes.
Yeah. Well, I'm going to jump back to old business.
I had one more thing, Kevin, I'm sorry. I started to tell you this, the other part of that statute, and I haven't looked at it a little bit, but it does talk about system failures and like when, and things like that and when they do fail as far as their ability to be tapped on and things like that. So there is a section in that code that allows for that too. So, sorry about that.
And to answer Kathy, at one time when we were looking at the sewer district, there was some talk about some financial help for some of these homeowners to make that connection.
And I thought we talked about that, that to convince them to do it, otherwise to sign on then, otherwise if you didn't, you're just going to take the full blunt of it. But that would be them to come up with that down the road with their money or whatever.
I think that's probably everything they're trying to figure in, not knowing what all finance is going to cost yet.
Right, yeah. I wonder if Laxton still would offer something like that.
I hope.
Wait until it went through that Monzuma, they'll have money to help out the homeowners.
I think, yeah, that they had to just digest a little bit of the expense of shutting everything off and.
Going back to the egress at the park with the landowner to the east there, David Brown, I haven't spoke to him since our, you put this together. It's probably critical for me to talk to him before we pass this or.
He, they have to sign it, you guys don't have to sign it.
Okay, so we don't have to pass this and?
No, I mean, you can vote to accept it, but they actually, they're the ones actually gifting the easement and so it's going to be signed by them.
Okay.
So is this, is this for the parking or the?
Yes, I was going to go back and kind of revisit that. It's the drive that runs down the south side of that playground that's been there since you went to school there. And so it's just grown over now and it's not, it's not stone, but they're stoned down under that, so it would take a little bit of work to get that back in shape. And then the possibility of the parking lot there at that lower diamond. And I don't know how many it will park along there, we'd have to look at that.
Better than what we have now.
It, it is, yeah. I just, I don't want all those cars parked up there and a kid is running out from the playground or running out from the concession stand. That's, that's worrisome and that place is packed at those nights when you have those games. So I think we've got to look at possibilities of, of giving them some more parking space.
So you're going to have them come into your office to sign this?
They're welcome to, they have to sign it in front of a notary. So if I remember correctly, I left it, the notary part where they could fill in Vigo or Park or Putnam or wherever, but if they want to come to my office, we're, all my staff are notaries, so they could memorize it for them.
So do you want to?
And we're open eight to four Monday to Friday.
I think I have one.
Okay.
If you have.
I do that, okay.
And then once we get it signed and everything, then we'll get off.
They have not seen it.
Yeah, okay.
And I've still got extra.
There's actually a strip there, like there's their property and then there's the park and then there's this little strip that goes between the two that used to be part of the schools and that's the legal description that we used for it. Because it fit perfectly with what looked like to be a alleyway or an access drag already. So, I think it was like twelve feet wide or something like that. I mean, it wasn't very wide, so.
Is there any way to make sure that we don't have people parking on the other side?
I would recommend you put a fence across.
That's what I was wondering.
And maybe that's something you could help them with. I mean, I don't know, that's something you could bargain with the property owner on. But yeah, that'd be a concern because.
Public or something with some chains or something, because we know how people would start.
Right, with parking, they just.
They just park.
Dave does not want to release that in case he needs to.
So yeah, that'd be, I think that's a great idea, have something where.
That was my concern.
And if they don't want a permit, we could always set it up, like the ball field people could set it up before our games, like just go out there and run the chain.
Oh, okay.
I mean, I, I'd do that if nobody else wanted to do it, I don't care, but just something to keep them corralled.
I just thought being friendly, like people like were thinking of your property.
Same with trash, like, I mean, if nothing else, after my games with my team, I'd walk around looking for that because I mean, we don't want to, you know, they're doing something nice, so. We kind of try to do that at the ballpark anyway when we have games and stuff, just try to keep it as clean as we can, but.
And it's also a good lesson for the kids.
I do make my teams clean up.
Yep. So we always did, after the ballgames.
And if we don't and we forget, we run, so.
Yeah.
Staying on the park, do you have something from Brian?
Yeah.
Contacted Brian Nelson, asked him to go to the park and look at the dugouts to make those improvements that was discussed. He said he dropped this off to Kathy. Replace all dugout benches with new wood due to the poor condition, reinforce seats as needed, paint dugout seats and touch up dugout. The materials he would need is the wood and the paint and then the labor. So his total bill with everything is thirteen hundred and twenty-five dollars for taking care of the dugout.
One top dugout, the top diamond, I want to call it the noise dugout, the faces.
Okay.
Those buildings here, seats there are different with all the rest of them. The rest of them are framed in and built up, looks like a bench type.
It does, it looks like a bench type, yeah. I don't have any idea, ever remember being any different.
I mean, I didn't know if there was one right away and somebody came up with that or what.
That's what I'm guessing.
I didn't know, was you going to try to compare that one to or we're going to try to put one in like the rest of them?
I don't know what, whether he has quoted both diamonds or not, I guess.
He didn't say anything to me, he just said what you asked him to do is all he said to me. I laid the quote up there, so I don't know.
Replace all dugout benches with new wood. Replace all dugout benches with new wood.
RMC came, uh, a number of years ago, and we were selected as their project for that year, and they, they put benches up there out along the trees, and they did a lot of the painting of the playground, and just a lot of improvements were done at that time, whether that bench was an extension of that, I don't know.
I guess clarification to make sure is both dugouts have been, both fields have been looked at for the dugout, so that way we know that we got them all.
When I talked to him, he called me, and he was at the upper diamond, he said, I don't see a whole lot of need, and I suggested wrong diamond to go to the other one well, and he got his eyes opened by what's needed.
Now, he did make comment about having, which you might agree with this, visitors and home painting on the outside of dugouts to make it to where if you're gonna have a tournament, it's like, you know where you're going, you know.
As long as he paints the right dugout.
Right, right, yeah, and I didn't know if that's something that you would want, if you wanted to clarify to you that.
Yeah, that's fine.
If it mattered to you guys, I don't know.
Traditionally, the home team's along the first baseline and the away teams are on the third baseline.
That was always opposite Bloomingdale, we were always home and we were against it.
That's how it still is in Bloomingdale. Because you stare straight into the sun out of the visitors dugout at Bloomingdale.
But then if that doesn't matter to you, then no.
I don't, I don't feel passionate either way, I mean, I don't know that the association would be having.
One end home and the other end visitors, so.
It really confused him.
I will get in touch with Brian and clarify that.
Well, because if we're putting a nice coat of paint on everything, should we make sure that the other dugout's kind of the same with a nice coat of paint?
Be nice if they matched.
Don't need to pass this tonight, so you get going on it by April one?
Well, that is up to the board, whether or not you wanna pass that contention on this being for both.
I said, we could probably text you to find out.
Well, when's the first game after?
Uh, softball starts April twentieth, baseball will be around then, I don't remember off the top of my head when baseball started.
Are you trying to call your son?
Five weeks.
It'd be mid-April.
Are you trying to call your son?
No, I'm not calling your son. I'm putting the dates.
I mean, practice is a start before then, but.
Right.
Yeah, you, um, about five and a half weeks, five weeks.
We'll be hosting a tournament May twenty-eighth to the thirty-first for softball, and so we may utilize both Bloomingdale and Marshall to do that.
I know, I'm gonna use them the week of the eleventh, I got tied up seven days then, so.
We'll be hosting three straight weeks of tournaments, I guess from May twenty-eighth to June fourteenth or so.
Okay.
So there's gonna be a lot of people coming and going from the ballparks for three weeks straight.
Oh, that'd be nice.
And our light, I guess, not to jump ahead, do you wanna finish that and then I can tell you?
I think we're, I'm agreeing with Kathy, I wanna.
Well, we're gonna try to bash that tonight, or what, and you said, continue?
She's going to question Brian whether that's for all, and then we can pass it.
What'd you say?
I was saying about go ahead and pass on that with the intention.
Who you texting?
We wait, see if you text.
I just texted your son.
The other thing that we have not committed to was whether or not we were gonna go with bleachers, aluminum bleachers up there. Trying to find what Nick sent me before.
Oh, now he's calling me. Hello? Hey. Okay, I'm gonna write on here, all four. Okay, yes. Okay, that's fine, we needed to clarify.
Kevin, if you don't mind, resend it to me.
Yeah, just, you can just tell me what it is.
Bye.
Fifteen twenty-nine, but I, I'm, I'm gonna resend it to you, so you can look at it, but, well, anyway, so this is what I, yeah, I can't get it to do anything, but, I don't know what it's doing there. Anyway, that's what I'd sent you before, and I just took that off of Amazon.
Yes, I've got it here.
Um, but that was just arbitrary, you know, I, I was flipping through looking at things, so. But that was a three red bleacher set, I forget how light it was though.
How much was it, Nick?
Fifteen hundred and twenty-nine.
I'd like to right now, it's a certain bleacher.
Yeah, that's what this.
I guarantee it.
It's what?
That sounds right.
I've looked up, I'll, um.
And what do they have over there now, just the one that's like on the?
They have that wood one that we redid the seats on, but I don't remember on the other, the lower fields, I haven't been down there much.
Yeah, it's got a set like that.
Oh, yeah, that's for after set on the lower diamond.
Yeah, he redid all those last year for us.
So it would just be for the upper diamond then?
For which?
The bleached aluminum bleachers.
So it'd be on the home, the home dugout side of both diamonds, because I think the, the visitors sites have those bleachers by them. But there aren't any by the home side.
Right.
Okay.
And these would be, so that way if you did have a big game, just that one, you could move them.
We could, we can consolidate, because like championship game, you know, under the lights, we could, you know.
Right. Well, we kinda know what price range we're in here with, uh, two sets of bleachers, it's gonna be a little over three thousand dollars. We have some options there, and we do have some park funds, we have, Washington Township has committed park funds. We also have talked about not only repair of the, the dugouts, but what we're going to do long term to the concession stand, the exterior of it. So that's a, that's another cost that enters into that.
Would any of that, our foundation money, would we be getting, have money allotted again for any of that?
I don't know.
That we could end up and have like a project?
So you have a forever fund and you have a board that controls where that money goes, and last I knew Karen Stutler was on it, but I don't know who else is on it for Marshall.
Yeah.
I'm not part of the foundation anymore, so I don't.
So it used to be Matt Helderman and Stacy Gill and Sharon Harmon.
So Matt Helderman's on the community foundation board itself now, so I don't know if he's still on the.
And she's not had any meetings for a couple of years, that she's just kinda done stuff on her own.
So, and Karen would be the one to ask about that.
And at one time I mentioned something about the park on doing some upkeep there, and she said, we, I've already done that once.
Well, when that's completed the playground and we added that little fence.
But if she saw the other things we're doing, maybe.
Especially with, with the, having the ball teams back, more bigger groups.
And I don't know if maybe you're only, does it matter how many times you put money into something out of?
No, that, that board determines where their funds go to.
Okay, just determines where.
So the foundation did a plan where it created funds for, I think it's five communities, maybe six, and then they had enough funding for their own money to be able to do things on a yearly basis, and so, and they have their own board that does it for them, so.
So out of this money that you've given me, is all of that designated towards the lights?
It is at this point, until we get through the expenses on the lights.
Okay, okay, I wanted to make sure that I had that tagged correctly, because I thought.
But that's the youth association's money, you guys are just holding it.
Right, right, that's what I thought, that's why I wanted to double check on both of those you gave me.
I think maybe touching base with Karen on money going in that direction, finding out where we stand, we could also look at Washington Township money or town money that we, we use, uh, for improvements up there.
Because I think bleachers, to me, and maybe I'm wrong, would be kinda important right now, and we got some big tournaments, and then we can try to see if we can get maybe, like, like we said, the forever fund, maybe we could use some of that, instead of trying to balance it out with what the towns got, kinda match a little bit, and half and half, get a pricing of what it costs to fix.
Or even the community foundation itself, but I'll tell you, a lot of the youth association funds came from the community foundation, so they may not double dip that way, I don't know. Whereas the, the local foundation, we haven't applied to. So, but about half those funds that you have came from the community foundation.
We're, and we're targeting a three thousand dollar.
For the bleachers?
Maybe for two cents, two cents, I mean.
Yeah.
If she would do, yeah, if she would just donate three thousand dollars, and we could say it's to the bleachers, and that would spend the money and we'd be over that.
Right.
That way we'll have to go through what we did on the celebration that was an ordeal. That way the money's spent and it's over and we're done. There's no leftovers, what's left, then we will spend and make up the difference.
Make up the difference and stuff, and then we can have it seen about at the other funds, to see if we can do something with it.
All we need for that fund is that we're in agreement that we would allow them to purchase those and put those bleachers up, since we're not paying anything for it.
It'd be on your property, it's like.
Yeah, so I think that, that would be the simplest.
The benefits of community, for our kids.
She may make you allow the application, I mean, I, I don't know how.
We, the town board, we're gonna pay for those bleachers then or not?
Not necessarily.
Okay, let's back up another step then, we need to get them ordered.
That's what I was.
The money's gotta come from somewhere, I'm trying to say.
Well, we have seven thousand dollars in our rainy day fund.
Mm-hmm.
So we could pay for them, and then she could just donate whatever she wanted, and we could put it towards those bleachers.
Over the bleachers, or I was even wondering if we, we don't have the money to pay the full for the bleachers itself, because I was looking at also, how do we end up in going ahead and pay to update and take care of our building, our concession stand?
I think that's a Washington Township, uh, to look at that, and because when I proposed the needs, I said, it's the, it's the maintenance, the upkeep, that we have a hard time staying up with the mowing and all that goes into that, and, uh, the only requirement is that we let them pay the bill. We tell them what we need and they'll pay the bill.
Right.
So I, I think that concession stand, uh, work could easily fall under that.
Okay.
And it might be too, we could go back to, was it Howard that donated a little bit of money, because their kids participated? That maybe we could go back and ask them if they'd be willing to help, they have in the past. Because I did find a little contract that Sharon had made with them at the time, because of the kids coming down here. So now that it's kind of a group of kids from the different towns.
I think Karen, Karen will.
Yeah, and I can't remember exact numbers, we just had it signed up.
Makes a lot of sense, and soon as she okay's it, we can just ignore her, and Nick has seen the bleachers, so you know they're.
I think they're.
And if she doesn't, we'll go ahead and just order them as a town, try to.
But it may take her a while though, to go through the process.
I know.
I got her, she'll never hear if you want it.
I've got it, too.
Okay, so then, if we're going to take that route, I'd like to have a motion that in lieu of the community foundation or the, the Marshall Forever Fund paying for it, then the town will accept that.
Or ma, if she would just make a donation towards it, not necessarily pay for them, make a donation towards it, that's what he's gonna have ear tag.
That's what I was wondering.
I know, but it's just that.
Okay, do I have a motion then?
I make a motion that we end up in, the, the town board would end up and pay, and we'll see if, if we can get the foundation to, for the fund, for the park.
Let's look at that motion.
Alright, both have been made and seconded, that in lieu of, uh, the funding necessitating that we step in, uh, we will go ahead and order the bleachers after you talk to Karen.
Okay.
All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay. Now, you can.
Um, so just update wise, um, we did have our youth association meeting, and we've had our league meetings for softball and baseball. Softball starts April twentieth, baseball, I think, is the week before that. Softball is gonna host between Bloomingdale and Marshall the eight U tournament for softball, which will end up being about, probably somewhere around eight to ten teams, and it'd be about a three or four day tournament from May twenty-eighth till the thirty-first, but that'd be between the two communities. The following two weeks, we're hosting the boys tournament from eight U all the way through twelve U between the two communities, which I, I can't tell you how many teams that's, it's just gonna be a lot of teams. Eight U will probably have ten teams, ten U will probably have eight or ten teams, twelve U has like six, I think. So, so for three weeks straight, there's gonna be a lot of ballgames at the ballpark, I guess is what I'm telling you, from May twenty-eighth through June fourteenth or so.
Okay.
But, so we're hosting the most tournaments we've hosted in a long time.
We definitely need a good schedule for the mowers, so that they know when and they can.
I'll get you all of that once we get it all set, um, I, I know the days right now is all I know. But it'd be night games, it'd be six and eight o'clock and things, there won't be day games, uh, we don't have any Saturday or Sunday games, so I can tell you that ahead of time. As far as the lights, I talked to RMC, we're in the process of ordering our materials for the lights, the electrical wire, the brackets, things like that. That's from the place in Crawfordsville, the name escapes me, you'll probably know it.
Kirby Risk.
Kirby Risk, yeah. Um, so Jason White is heading that up for our committee, um, but we're in the process of getting that lined up. So we're not going with the online people that gave us the quotes, we're going local to see maybe they'll help us out. Um, RMC's donating the poles, um, they're gonna be set in April, I have to give them locations on where they're gonna be set. When they quoted us the lights, they imagined four poles at each field, they had two by the dugouts, and then two by the corner outfield, is what they had. Um, and then they had five sets of stadium lights per pole, is what they quoted us for our fields. So we're just following the template the electrical guy gave us. I told them that when we go to do locations, that I thought maybe having Kevin there might be a good idea, or at least to rent it by him, because we need somebody with the idea of where that foundation for that school's at.
Dale will be another.
Or Dale, yeah. Because.
Be closer to the upper diamond with the lower diamond by far.
Okay, well, then we may not have to worry about things, we aren't doing the upper diamond at all, we're just gonna do the lower diamond.
The only thing you have to worry about in the lower diamond, there's a second tank behind the concession stand, and then in the outfield is the frame of system.
Okay.
But you're gonna be outside the fence.
Yeah, um, and then I, I think they were looking at having overpacks help trench it to run the conduit and the electrical through. But RMC's gonna place the poles and, let's see. We don't know how much money will be left, I think the intention is to do other improvements if more money is left. Wish list wise, we're talking about bases, we were talking about a scoreboard, I mean, there were things that kinda were thrown out there, or switching to brick dust from line and dust, possibly, uh, that's what a lot of the ballfields do now, is brick dust. So those are some of the things that were talked about. But that's kinda what we have going on, so, we had good numbers, turned out, um, we had, I think, two teams at eight U, two teams at ten U, and one team at twelve U, which last year we had three at eight U, one at ten U, one at twelve U, so those numbers just kinda upticked. So it's about the same turnout, baseball wise. Um, we do have a coach pitch team also, which I don't remember how many kids are on it, but that's the five to six year olds.
True.
And then the softball, they may play there some, but they're primarily at Bloomingdale for the season, softball is. So we've kinda got baseball here and softball at Bloomingdale until we get to tournaments. Um, the community's involved, though, we have Kayuga, Monizuma, Clinton, Rose, Rockville, and then Turkey Run. So that's kinda our group, Montez, Jesse, Monizuma, and then Montezuma.
Keeman's not in there?
Uh, no, they're not, they're mixed in with Turkey Run. So, um, they used to do, they used to have Keeman as coach pitch, and Ed Marshall and Bloomingdale, but now Keeman and Bloomingdale together, coach pitch wise, and then Marshall has its own coach pitch team too.
I assume the concession stand is fine the way it is?
Yeah, um, I, we were talking about getting a couple items, like a hot dog machine, you know, how they have their rotisserie thing, or, um, there were some things like that, but there wasn't really a wish list there as far as anything, I think we'll try to handle that, so. They did ask me about the electrical, if they wanted a separate box put in at the concession stand, or if they could use the existing space within the existing electrical box at the concession stand.
For?
Putting, uh, the breakers in for the lights, was the question asked to me, I told them I didn't know if you guys had a preference or not. I also don't, haven't looked at the box, so I don't know if there's room for, or not.
Yeah, I was wondering too, if you start adding on those like, the rotisserie things that you might wanna expand on, if that'd amp or that too, though.
It's not really a big voltage thing, it's, but, yeah, so.
I doubt if that's a three hundred amp service in there, probably more like a.
I don't like a light bulb that much, so Kevin, I'm gonna be LEDs, yeah.
There'll be reasons.
There'll be LEDs.
There's a popcorn popper, the hot dog and the microwave.
Do I?
I'm saying, you're getting more than ten, under ten amps.
I don't know what's supposed to pull the lights.
Do you tell me to have the electrician look at it and then come back?
I think that's the smartest thing, to do that, or have Dave look at it.
It's something not in my wheelhouse, so, I mean, I know a little bit that way, but I told him I'd just ask you guys, so.
Yeah.
Oh, she went to Jennifer first, I think the hundred, I think.
Play what?
I think it's the hundred, the small one.
We're gonna have to key, get over and check that.
RMC talks like though they put the poles in in April, and if they do that, we're gonna immediately hook the lights up, because why not be playing underneath lights all summer if we can?
Right.
So.
Yeah.
We got it, and you can use them.
Yeah, so, but that's kinda where we're at, we're at process, we're done fundraising, we raised all the funds we need, we're good to go that way, and if we have extra funds, hopefully we can do. And if we have extra funds, hopefully we can do some other things, so. I told them to start at Marshall and then let's do Bloomingdale after that. So, but they said they'd do them all in the same day. So apparently you can set a pole pretty quickly if you're RMC, I guess, I don't know. I've never seen that process, so.
Oh, post them real quick, it's what goes on, it's slow down.
Yeah, I mean, do those basically show them around?
Will they hang the lights same time?
Uh, we have a guy that's hanging the lights, RMC's not gonna hang the lights, so. But our electrician's gonna hang them and wire them and everything like that, so. Which is Riley Carr, but. Which is RMC basically. So that's kind of what we're up to right now. And we, if we have extra money, maybe we can do something with the fields, cause they could use some TLC to it, so.
Then as you get your bills, you're gonna turn them to me to pay, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Just holler, cause I can swing by if you've got them.
This quote is for all, the, all four dugouts.
All four. These stand right there.
So you pin him down right now, huh?
Finding him the works would, would have been, we could have that tomorrow.
So we're go on.
We're go.
Does he have it done by tomorrow afternoon?
Try to.
Okay.
Can you start right now?
We're putting lights up over there.
Tom has already had half of them done, you better.
If we don't get, uh, uh, Disturbing the Beast call in, yeah, we can.
That Brady's right here.
Cause the radio, Wes, you know I'm up.
Oh yeah, you and your radio.
Oh, thanks Brian.
I'm telling you right now, I hear at my house, I'm coming up there. You dead man will.
Is that all it takes to get you up there?
Okay, Brady, what can you help us with?
Actually gotta go meet a lady here in a second, she's got some power lines down in the backyard.
Yeah, I, I caused that to, they wanted me to go over and make a determination. I said, that's private property, it has nothing to do with the town, so.
Where's that at?
It's over by the Baptist church.
It's like one twenty-four.
Oh, people.
One twenty-five South Church Street.
Yeah.
So, and then I got some other stuff, but maybe later.
Okay.
I'm gonna go meet her and then I'll be back.
Okay, anything else you can, can you go for us?
Here in a little bit.
Okay, good, thank you. Nick, was there anything else?
Um, the house next door, um, we had court on it. He thought he'd met everything and it was in good shape. But I just told him I was gonna ask you guys about that and, do you want anything else done, or?
What I told him was we would have to get Brady to okay, cause I'm not sure what all he put on there that needed done. But I know he boarded up some open windows and.
Those were the things Brady had written. I talked to Brady before court today and he indicated if those things were done, he's okay with it. But I just wanted to talk to you guys. I did express to him that, you know, that if he's not mowing the grass and things, that this isn't one of those things where just cause we're done with this, doesn't mean you don't have to do any of that there.
Could he set up his outhouse?
Did he what?
Could he set up his outhouse?
I can ask you, I had his phone up.
It's tilted over back there.
Yeah, I saw it when I drove in. Um, but yeah, he had court today and so, I mean, if we're okay with it, I can dismiss that and.
I mean, it, it looks fine.
I noticed today I drove by that, I thought, oh.
Yeah.
So I did notice it.
Yeah, so. But I, I usually talk to Brady before we go to court, just to make sure where he was adding things.
Okay, as far as I'm concerned, I, I think it's fine. And when I talked to the, the gentleman and told him, no, this has to be done and this has to be done. And he did that, but then he was to talk to Brady, so I assume he did.
Yeah, Brady said he's okay, cause his main concern was about those windows and raccoons and varmints or kids or anybody else crawling in there and getting in there.
It's kind of like the outhouse being tilted up, I mean, it's just an open.
Yeah.
Hole that they can.
Right.
But that's one of the few you'll ever handle was, with an outhouse.
Uh, you wouldn't believe the things I've seen.
And our nice neighbors here go out, out back, and then it's right there.
Between Brady and I, I'm sure we could, or you're in-laws, we could tell you some stories about some things.
Okay. Kathy, what do you have?
Uh, let's see, got a quote for mowing from P and B, they've done it. It didn't raise. I didn't even put it in the paper because I've never had any responses, so there's no use, no use wasting the money.
I agree.
So they've done it all these years, we've not had any trouble with them, they'll work with this, they'll work around your schedule, they're real good.
The, the only, I know they do some spraying for us. I would like for them to hit, I think there's two or three, two hydrants, I think along forty-seven. The house that sits way back off the road, across from where, um.
Mike Highburg.
Across from Highburg.
Jackson's?
Yes. That, that hydrant sits out near the corner. If they would just spray that once a year. And then the other one is all the way down on the road that goes back to the pump house.
Yeah, right down inside corner, I'm turning.
Oh, oh, there's one right there.
Cause there's one at Asbury's, it's fine. There's one up here that, I call it the Hutchins house, it's fine.
Okay.
I, I mean, it's a three minute job, if they will do that, that would be fine. I'm fine with that.
So this, this is last year's or this year's?
This is this year's.
This is this year's quote, it's the same as what it was last year.
So they just came up about you didn't advertise, you called them for it or what?
He sent it to me and said, are you interested? And I said, oh, yeah, wasn't thinking about it.
Was it compared to last year's, are there increases?
Same number.
Same number.
Well, doesn't surprise me.
And they didn't mow their some, they'd call and say, do you wanna mow? I mean, they don't just mow, like that when the grass was dead and they'd say, do you wanna mow, the weeds are kind of bad, you know, so.
I'm, I'm fine with the tale.
Yeah.
We need to make a motion to go ahead and pass.
Yes.
We'll make a motion, accept that.
I second the motion.
There's a motion that's been made to accept the proposal for P and B lawn and landscape maintenance for our mowing contract. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Three oh.
No sign that. You sign it, so I mean. No, it's official.
Okay.
And then our water usage, it's, it's getting better. I, I still don't know what's going on with that company, it's gone mine in its own. Um, but like I said, we're still not down in the teen teens, we'll go a teen and then we'll go up in the twenties. I don't know. Um, I had a couple people this month that I questioned if they had a leak, or if they're using their water, or. They pay it.
Is the total is a lot higher than a normal month?
Twenty-two, you know, we're doing, twenty-two thousand a month, average, that's about, yeah. Cause we had these days that didn't even register, that makes no sense.
Well, it was six hundred and thirty thousand, three sixty-eight for the month.
But yeah, an average of twenty-two thousand.
So.
I mean, that's not bad.
Too far out, yeah.
Considering that we've had some leaks and I saw that one that she thinks there's a leak, she's not sure, but it's gone down. They're watering some animals, so she's kind of iffy, you know, but.
As long as that twenty-two stays fair and constant, I think we're fine.
Right, so, and then here's my water adjustments that I've made, just let you sign off on those. And here's our February water in February town. And Nick told me I could pave the Houdini out of our ARP fund. Now, would we be able to pay for that, that little signal thing out of there?
Anything is infrastructure development.
That'd be plus by the infrastructure.
Like improvement?
And we did not have anything earmarked out of that ARP, anything.
Not anymore, cause we've done with Westler, aren't we?
That's what I'm asking, was there ARP money that we committed?
Cause we paid them like ten.
For the board?
Back when?
We're done with that, we built that.
Now we've filled that already, so we're.
Yeah, yeah, they've already, I paid them.
Part of it we never ended up filling in the original contract and we don't just pay for it and, and it was left there.
Okay.
Um, as I remember, I think when you had the ARP, the first day, you built part of it. And then as it moved to that other, we could just tell on the rest of it and was without.
So we're good, that's what you're saying, right now?
For that, yeah.
For that.
And we've got, that one's in there.
So that was a water infrastructure improvement that you messaged. Right, you're improving the water.
Yeah, we replaced the pump out there, the pump house.
Right.
And so then now we bought this.
Well, we haven't bought that.
Well, no, not yet.
We haven't even got the quote on it yet.
But actually.
What were yours?
Oh, I thought we had a quote, oh.
Well, there were some things that we were changing.
Oh, okay.
Is it loaded on your phone?
Can I bring that up?
Can you stick?
Yes, of course, yeah. Uh, the Spitfire, is it?
Signal fire.
Signal fire.
I can get these three years.
They, a couple of guys came over and have installed it. And Tom and I have both got logins right now, we've been looking at it to see what.
I was wondering if it was successful when you.
Yes, and they did, they have made changes and upgraded some things that we wanted to have done.
Okay.
We can get a visual of the, of water volume or height of the water in the tower. Um, it shows like pumping records, not numbers, but in a graph form, so we can tell it's, it's pumping here.
Below, between.
Uh, the alarms are, are working on it. It'll, it'll send us an alarm if, if we're at the low point or the high point. So those things are already done, we have not, and I don't know if we'll ever get to the point where they can tell us the gallon each that's pumped in a day. That was the next question that they were asking about.
Okay.
Did it, it set up, the last message I have here was they're talking about being able to let you know when a pump's running.
Yes.
That's all, you got all that set up?
Yes, I thi, I think that's in there now.
I haven't seen that, okay.
You haven't seen it, Tom?
Well.
It shows when the tank elevation increases.
Yeah.
They couldn't tell you which pump, actually doing pumping.
But our screen up at the tower shows when the pump one or pump two is running. So I thought that was gonna be a, a simple fix, but they had to add on something to expand it.
To add that, you know, I don't believe that that's in, I just tried to log in, now I could get into it. So the, the, I guess, the question is for the town, you, you wanna go ahead with that unit? Uh, that you have, that has some functionality. Uh, the quote for that was, uh, twenty-six hundred dollars and thirty cents. Uh, for, for basically the setup that you have now. That included, let me find it, one year of data, cause it's cellular. So then after a year, you'd have to take over that cellular data plan and it's three hundred and thirty-two dollars for two years.
For, for two years, say?
For two years, yeah.
Three hundred what?
Three hundred and thirty-two dollars.
For every?
Every two years.
Oh, okay, so what happened to the eleven hundred and thirty dollar one we were looking at?
So that was the cost of the hardware.
It's just, yeah, not the, and not the changes that we asked for.
So the cost of the unit itself, the physical thing was eleven hundred and thirty dollars. Plus install it and plus a year worth of data is, is twenty-six hundred and thirty dollars. If you wanna add the card, it gave you basically what you see on the screen. So pump running, pump fail. What else would it give you, it lets you know if you're controlled, if you're powering out. Uh, also it'll alarm out into that scenario. Uh, let's see what else it could do, I think that's the thing now. You have to add a card, an additional input and output card to that. So the cost would be thirty-five hundred dollars for that one versus the twenty-six hundred for the setup that you have.
Thirty-five hundred total or thirty-five hundred additional?
Total. So your infrastructure improvement, you should be able to run through it, but your ongoing cost could be something you guys would have to.
The data ongoing cost and any improvements after that.
But your initial infrastructure, they don't give a whole lot of guidance on what's infrastructure. But generally, I mean, if you can justify it as an improvement into your system, that's what the other communities have been doing, so.
So it's best to go ahead and get what you kind of want now.
For the infrastructure part.
For the infrastructure part.
Yeah, but be cautious, cause the ongoing cost is your, your cost.
So if we.
Well, the ongoing cost is only the data.
Would be the data on the cellular plan.
There's not a maintenance.
That's what it sounds like. Not a, not a maintenance cost on it, yeah.
And the data is the data, whether you use, which one will you? Okay.
The other thing that was talked about, that I don't know where it landed and I don't see any information I have, is about getting the meter.
Of the data, you say, talk of it?
Yeah, they were doing some brainstorming on that, the last time I talked to Brian or Marco, one of them. To see if that's even possible.
That may not be.
I still would like to talk to the company that sold us that and get them in here and have them one-on-one, if we can ever get, get them to stop by. So.
It is, the meter does, if you drive out there, the meter will read it, right?
Sometimes it'll read it from the highway, sometimes you let it drive down and set it right in front of the pump house.
Do it.
So it depends on the weather and whether I drive down to pump house and do it or not. And whether I have a clean view.
And as you said, if there's corn in the fields, then.
It won't read it, and that just boggles Larry Harmon's mind. Cause he said there, and, well, Todd said the same thing, there's no real reason that that should come into play because the antenna's up high. I can't even reach the top of the antenna, it's on top of the building.
I don't know if the curvature there with that hill.
That's what I was wondering about.
And see, I made that comment, but, I, I don't know.
That's, that's the reason I, I'd like to have them here to look at the height of that. And see if we could just change that, just add a, a higher post there.
Of course, they didn't set all that up.
No, I, I understand, but.
Yeah, so they've made, yeah.
That would save you that drive and.
Right.
Read it from here.
So.
That sounds like it needs to be looked at, cause I mean, you, like you said, when you have corn, we have corn last year in the field.
So this year shouldn't be beans, so you shouldn't have a problem this year. And, and I'm not swearing that that little thing's not part of the problem too, cause I have terrible time turning it on, and I have some day one on that.
Those things are kind of picky, and you end up, you're trying to get a wireless connection to something.
So.
Okay, so then we need to decide whether we want to stay with the signal fire at a cost of twenty-six hundred and thirty cents.
Well, with the total being, he said thirty-five if we want to go with.
So if you wanted, if you wanted to be able to see more information in the long end, as far as, um, if a pump fails, uh, our pump's running. To see that, cause right now every one you can see is the tank block.
So it's just red right now, it can't tell us if we have a pump failure or not, or it just tells us the water level period?
Water levels, I understand.
The water level, but then it sends you a text if something doesn't pick on right now, right? It's supposed to send a warning text that something's off.
Yes, we do, I get a text if, if we go below the low level alarm or it goes above the high level.
So it's all based on one information from the level transmitter on the tank is where that alarm comes from. Well, you know, so you can set that to give yourself some buffer as far as not getting too, too big of a pickle, but it'll tell you what the problem is.
Right.
If the pump fails, like that motor went out before, that would be what this other thing would be able to help you know is, hey, I tried to run the pump and it, it didn't start. It just gives you a little extra time potentially.
Okay.
Uh, but it's, I mean, this is quite a lot farther away from where you are now and, and much easier to.
Is the thirty-five hundred dollar cost a different signal fire unit or the same one, just an additional?
It's just got an extra card on it.
Card, okay.
It's got the extra signals that are coming from the pump, the pumps. Whereas the one right now is just picking up the signal from the tank level sensor.
Okay.
So you gotta, to beef up your, your, the system, you gotta add a card, which that's possibly like the money for the extra card.
So, uh.
Cause at one point in time, you'd ask, hey, can we see?
Yeah.
More likely to see on the screen, which is, which pump is running, is it failed? And, and that actually, because that's what you can see on the screen out there to really kind of have this more match what is on that screen.
That screen out there will tell you pump one failure, not, the pump, pump one's not running, it's a failure.
Just tells you failure, which is all right, I mean, you know.
Yeah.
But you have the physical you'll look at.
Yeah, here.
Yes.
But do we have, how much funding do we have in that ARP?
Ten thousand, five hundred and forty-five dollars.
Well, I think there's a benefit to having that information. I think you can drill down too much data that we're not gonna use, but I think that would be nice to have.
I do too. And like Nick said, now's the time, if we're going to do it for infrastructure, if we want to have that extra feature, then we go ahead and do the thirty five hundred.
It's a lot better than the twenty thousand dollars that I was given to believe. By somebody else.
Does our little red light still work too?
Yes.
Yeah.
We tested it the other day when they were here.
And it did flip the points on how that works, the red box.
They did. At at low level, it blinks slow and at high level it blinks fast, red. That shows you there's a problem. So we have to decide, do we want to change that or we want to leave it as is, knowing that the public would see a flashing light and say, hey, you guys got a problem. You got a flashing light or.
Well, now I know that there's a light. I had no idea. I mean. Maybe I'd notice it now.
The power fail will be on here too, so that, that's what happened.
It would.
The battery backup went out. It couldn't power the light, so it was in a wrong condition, but it didn't turn the light on. So this this.
You just got a double backup.
This will help you out with that.
We're going to spend this money by when?
I would make a motion that we go ahead and purchase the upgraded signal fire.
It is.
So I I think it takes care of a lot of issues that we had this last time.
I'll second the motion.
A motion and a second to upgrade to the thirty five hundred dollar.
It's long, I guess.
Unit. Uh, all those who favor say aye. Aye, opposed?
Cause the only thing right now we're using that money for is any drainage that we have for our stormwater.
Yeah.
Our county, do you have traffic?
So, okay.
What was that acronym?
Care Zap?
Yeah.
Have you talked to Brian or Marco? Do I need to get ahold of them?
You do.
Okay.
I'm happy to.
Okay. No, I talked to Marco today. Yeah. He just was asking about the failure alarms and things. I feel he was.
If you have it on your phone, it's my knowledge.
Yeah, I think we. If you'll do it, it's fine.
And then here's the board meeting minutes from. January, February, February, March.
So Kevin, is that option to get more people added on? So that way, once we do buy it, we can have.
We can add them, yeah.
So that way, if he hands it out, that way, if he's possible.
I may already have logins for you, but we're on the trial login.
I know we're on the trial, but I didn't know if that was.
Yeah, but everybody will have a login that needs it. I I don't think there's a really a limit on that, the number of logins.
I'm just looking at that. That's how to start a pump and like, you know, that way if you tear it on and something's happening.
See, and Tom will get an alarm.
You can have a lot of drought around the world, don't you know?
And Tom decides that you need to go on a whim somewhere, not being located.
Depends on what it is with, you'll be located or not, right?
When you go somewhere in June, Tom, it's easier. I'm gonna get a job like that all these days.
You don't know how to quit.
Bobby's telling me I'm telling him now, but we're busy.
They've replaced that pump. We're on three phase on that number one pump now. Everything's working.
So three phases, everything's in the order.
Yes. We paid them tonight and.
Yeah, I seen that name. I knew, I remember that name, because it was an odd name.
Yeah, Houdini?
Houdini.
It's a hell of a name.
Yeah. Well, I almost discarded it in the email. I was like, wait a minute here. Well, you know. And then, um, just so you know, I am being audited for nineteen, twenty, twenty one, twenty two, and twenty three. And it's not a. And not a full-blown audit, um, what he said, but. And he had me pull ordinances the other day. He wanted to see all the ordinances and he picked out different ones himself. I don't know what he picked out. And he went through the books. I had to give him all of our books on water in town stuff. And he worked till about one o'clock and then he's going to be back Monday and start pulling invoices to match up my checks and that type of stuff. And he wants to pull, um, billing on the water and so we'll go from there on what he does. So, but right now he seems pleased. Just a couple of little minute things, but that everybody's getting hit with them.
That's his job.
Yeah, right, right. Well, it's motor vehicle, which is really stupid to begin with. They have motor vehicle, then you got to split it up into restricted and then they're wanting, the budget puts it together, but now he's saying, I need to keep it separate and.
But they gotta change their mind every once in a while.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause last time you got audited, those ladies made the suggestions for you and like get our initials on your waist.
No, I did that. No, that's all my dealings. That was my internal control. And he had to see our internal controls, that we had all done those and so, oh, he did say that, which I'm going to have to work on, we've got to get our capital assets up to date and listed. So I've got to get a spreadsheet on what we own and a value on them and which I've kind of been. So he said, just make a spreadsheet and just start it on.
I think our insurance company had some numbers.
They had some, but like I said, he needs to know the ballpark. He said, like, if you have a ballpark, your concession stand, your playground equipment, your town car, you know, they want to know what you, because we have a threshold in there of five thousand dollars. So anything over a value of five thousand dollars or you may want to look at upping that. So once we get that. And there's a place in the gateway that you're supposed to put that in every year. We just let it go is what's in there. But, and that's been the topic that I thought would be coming, because everybody's been asking that question. I've been seeing, so.
Does it include, uh, like the water system?
Yeah, 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 just, yeah, anything that's on.
So you'll have to have a value of all the the lines and the pumps, everything.
The water tower and yeah. So, and he wants to make sure too that we are, the insurance is correct and. So, so that's something he said, and I don't know that he's really gonna, I don't want to say ding us. He said, he looked at what I had, but he said, you really need to get more in-depth on this. And I said, well, we've kind of been looking at it and I had been looking at it and I've been thinking about it and I had a leg out to kind of start working on it. So that's why he said, just make you a spreadsheet and just start, just first thing you go through and write down everything you own. And he said, then you can subcategorize it from there and go from there and just to work. So.
I have your answer. December thirty first, two thousand twenty four is when you have to obligate your funds by. You must actually spend them by the end of two thousand twenty six.
Oh, twenty six, okay, so we do have a little time.
This year and spend them by the end of twenty six. So you need to vote to have them put somewhere. So you got all year to spend something, Kathy.
Other than that?
Brady. Um, for charges of being fined, so.
Okay.
And then, uh, there's another issue. Um, Darcy Sims called me today, um, about some chickens that were getting in his yard. He's kind of gone off the rails, so.
Okay.
He's kind of concerned, so.
Okay, they come from the north, as we assume?
East, yeah.
Okay.
Need that in the shoe.
Okay. Um, there's a couple of other places in town I want you to look at, so I'll get with you on that.
We're dismissing next door. I told him I'd talk to you about it and we were up there.
Anything else?
I got this walk-in the other day that, is that building over there starting to lose some bricks? There's some bricks on the sidewalk, bricks and pieces.
What, this is right here, across the street?
Yeah.
Which he has bought the Russellville town.
I think he has, I don't know.
It's been signed.
Okay.
It did get signed.
I'm not sure what it is.
Huh? It did get signed. I was told it was signed. I that, I was just told that this last week. His signature was on the paperwork, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll take a look at it too, but I haven't seen anything.
It was yesterday. I was walking.
Okay.
So, I was just curious.
Yeah, I have not heard or.
Okay.
Or seen him for months and months.
And that's what I thought maybe with the cold weather that he's waiting till spring to come back and start doing some stuff. I don't know. Or if it's put on hold. I don't know.
Well, I was going to want to choose buying a new building.
But it needs all updates, so they said it's in bad repair too.
Okay.
So I don't know. I have no clue.
Dale, anything else?
I want to, nothing at this time. I know she has to go down North Main Street, down about the hotel, but there's a hole coming in the road right there. It's a smaller hole.
Yeah.
Yeah, we fix it every year, you know, but I just kind of hate doing that. Main drag through town will get a hole. Pretty soon it gets all the way across the doggone.
Yeah, and I I asked for you guys to look and see if you come up with a list of places and get the padding started.
Padding started, okay.
We don't have a lot of money, so don't get too concerned.
Well, I'm going to look a little bit closer. I've got another spot to look at. I seen that just yesterday. It's about that big, you know.
And are we going to do anything about where they fixed that repair up there by you in front of, uh, Kingery's? Didn't Ronnie Black come do something? They tore up the sidewalk. Isn't that our responsibility to get that sidewalk all back down?
Yeah, that are just kind of up.
Yeah.
See, when you start mowing, it's going to be argumental.
Yeah, I'm waiting for them to start calling on that.
I would have fixed it.
No, well, they love the chunks and they're like partly in the yard. They're not put back.
They didn't do that.
They didn't do that?
Kingery did that.
Oh, okay.
There used to be a stubs that got there about this tall, about this big round. We burnt that thing out last year, but he dug out all that concrete.
Oh, okay, well then, okay, I just thought, I thought that was us, because the sidewalk looks.
No, I don't, why he's not done something with that concrete. I mean, understandable, it's it's not his, but he's wanted to dug it out, threw it out there, you know.
Okay, well, then I won't worry about that when I see it and I'm thinking, oh.
Okay.
Okay.
I've noticed too, with walking, a lot of vehicles just kind of sitting in yards. Are we looking at?
Someone's going to talk to him, but if you have some also.
I just noticed just work walking around.
Yeah.
There's, and there's somebody that's got like a trailer full of like appliances junk and they're partly parked. I mean, I know it's not a new sidewalk. It's the road behind you, basically, up on the corner. They do have it on the sidewalk, part of the trailer park, and I'm like.
He messaged me today, wanted to talk about something, so I said, that's probably what's going on.
So I was just curious, because I was like, well, we kind of get on one and we have to be even. But it seems like we got, I don't know if we want to do, and I know it costs money, but a cleanup day? Cause it just seems like there's a lot of trash that nobody's picking up.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if they're picking it up or not.
I know, you have a hard time spending money on that.
I don't have time to spend money on that.
Making people responsible.
I paid down my trash hole three weeks in front of my house.
I know.
These people, you're not going to change them, darling. You'll be back at waste six months from now. And those same people will not come up and take advantage of it either.
Because that's something we can discuss.
I mean, it is a discussion. I think it's a good idea personally myself. Those people have got something. What were you into this mattress, you know? And I think it's great, but the ones who would really like to, or I'd like to use it, don't use.
Well, you have seen some used appliances here in there just sitting out.
But then you can't put that in those, that.
Here, you can't put that. Somebody's got around back here, back by your old Houdini, lives back there. They've got appliances in front of their garage outside. I'm like.
What was her price?
Yeah.
So.
Come some down.
Yeah, it is.
I was going to tell you, Tom, got anything?
Tom, you good?
I'm building progress, planning on, uh, Friday going to a regional meeting with the, uh, the, you know, finance authority to keep Marshall good in case you need to, you know, borrow some money and then give me a continuing education credit for nothing, so.
Does that cost them?
No.
Okay. So be sure and turn in any. Okay.
Well, eat well while you're there.
So.
Dale, you here?
I just have a couple of quick things. Uh, water loss audit, are you helping with that?
Mm-hmm.
For this year?
Okay.
And then the lead line inventory, probably some, it gets warmer and if you guys want to get together all weekend and we'll we'll start going through the files and start putting that together, um, if that's okay. Got a new vision a couple of months ago.
Yes.
You did that, don't you?
I I guess a lot of it is the the sequence of of getting the information we need, and I talked to Tom a little bit about that. Uh, there's so many unknowns still out there and I don't know if they're changing the rules, they're going to adapt, because as our conversations, it really didn't affect us, but Chicago, New York, St. Louis, there is no physical way that they can ever do it as thoroughly as what I understand they want. But we want to make sure we take care of it and get it done in a timely manner.
So is the plan for Wesler to input all this? Are you guys going to show me what to do for me to input all this?
Uh, Dylan's going to do it or Kathy can do it, doesn't matter.
Sound like Kathy's one too.
However you want to do it, Kathy.
Cause does it have to be followed up and kept up then? Is that the next thing it does, doesn't it?
So you've got to, yeah, what you make changes, you have to keep it up today.
We'll think about that.
Yeah, well, I've heard some of the other utilities talking about some of the things they're doing by sending, you know, cards for the individuals to fill out, you know, what time, when your house was built, things like that and what kind of piping you have in the house and you know, there's a lot of information to be dug up from somewhere.
We know, we just have to sit down and get started and go from there on what what you're wanting and what we need and.
So that's what I was thinking.
That's funny. Okay, I'll talk about that. We'll chat and see.
Right.
I was talking to her today. Okay, we need to mandate within sixty years.
Okay.
They couldn't do it in sixty years.
Nothing else? Or Darren?